Hello, it's Marion. It's about 12 minutes till 7 o'clock. This is Billy Crone at our beautiful City Hall and I'm getting ready for our City Council meeting. See you guys around. Bruce, how are you?
Um, I think so. When am I supposed to cut the curves out on the south side? Do you know? Okay. I appreciate that because I want your hat box done. Yes. Yeah, I know we talked a lot. I think, um, yeah. I'd rather be an ADA. But if we need to like stripe this, maybe, you know. If you stripe it, then I think. Yeah. Yeah, but I would rather be an ADA. And I know that's not our part, but, you know. We're saying. Yeah, no, at least we're doing it. Just like I said, like we're not getting, because we're not looking makeup to make it accessible. Because I've had, I've seen parents, no one's really shown to me, but I was kind of like digging around online. People are complaining about it not being seen. Right, exactly. So if we can just get it back in service. Yeah, they seem on it. Yeah, it's supposed to go to see first street. Yeah, that's what, I mean, which one's. I took the agenda and she said she hasn't heard anything, so I said. Yeah, and I mean, I put my information in the address and I asked her, do you feel like we need another? And she said, not unless you do. I think it's good, but it doesn't, you know. Yeah, I'm happy to. Can I use somebody else? I need to reach out. Yeah, but I wanted to make sure I had all that information. I don't, I just wanted to make sure I had my information. Like, I know in theory why we do it, but I wanted to have data. I thought I was looking. Do all of it, which I love. Like, to see first street is gonna look so nice. And I love the beauty of the slope, and there, just make it easier for them to park on the side, like on the side of the road. That's the only thing that I've noticed is like, because people couldn't pull their drivers, people parking up to see first street. Issues or losses. It's a temporary name by, from what I, it sucks somewhere nice.
What can we do to reduce the dust in Ward 4 with all that concrete cutting and? People are waking up to cars, or coming home, cars covering dust.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, unfortunately, it's a product of. And they're using, I mean, they're wet cutting it, and so, I mean, they're trying to control the dust as much as possible. Um, but I think the problem is temporary concrete is starting to kind of get dusty because it's not meant to, you know.
I know there are tools that use vacuum, so like when I have my garage worked on, they ground the floor flat. And they had a vacuum sort of attachment.
Right, for a space like this big.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
Something bigger. That's too bad. It's a hazard to the lungs, too. That dust is.
No, I know, and I've been, we've been talking about it with the crossing guard and all of the things. So it's, you know, it's something for me, but again, we wish we would have been able to get it done. Product of that, so.
I was gonna talk about Tara Maharas. This morning, or this evening, I should say. I got about like six or eight more sign signups this afternoon between like 1 o'clock and now. Had along Antioch and some of the streets. I parked up here, unloaded the bike and went for a bike ride.
I didn't think that at all. No, no, no. Oh my gosh. No, because then I would have said that, no, go ahead now. I know, I know.
Yeah, I've been trying to plan everything out. How about you guys? One thing I would add to the agenda. But that's not what you're worried about, right? Talking about.
Are you gonna?
Taking two inches off the road and making. Marion Drive three lanes.
You're, you're gonna invite them to the dance party, right?
Yeah.
On Johnson Drive Bridge. I should have brought a, should have brought a speaker in. That was the most hilarious. I literally spat my coffee out. It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't tried the social since about noon and I think. I need to, maybe. They're talking about time in the day. This campaigning thing is really, this is a lot. My hat is sweaty. I'll take your word for it. Yeah, people don't like it when the government gives all the money away to rich voters. Is Marion posting that? No way. They're posting pro, pro corporate welfare propaganda specifically to respond to my campaigning. I betcha.
Holy shit.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I think next time they do their social post for, um, Marion is hiring, I wanna comment to add on. You know, maybe I'll, I'll edit the, the photo and I'll post my own photo with city administrator listening. As one of the positions. Yeah, the people aren't happy with Chris. Uh, his name has, his name has come up talking to voters. People know about him and hate him around the city. Yeah? I, I invite everyone I talk to. You know, twice a month. How dare you request records that your tax money produced? Do a request for everyone who's gotten a code complaint in the last year. Everyone, everyone who's been like penalized by the state or something, because those are voter.
Invite Scout Master Scott Armstrong and his troop, uh, 247 to come forward. They're gonna lead us in the, uh, pleasure allegiance this evening, if you would come to the podium. Uh, when you do, we will all stand and please, uh, join them in the pleasure allegiance.
That's cool.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, for leading us in that, and, uh, I understand the troop is learning of urgency. So please, uh, welcome if you want them to stay as long as you want, but if you need to get up and go, we understand. Well, yeah, I think the next, uh, order of this would be to call for, uh, well, call for, oh, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Page.
Here.
Councilmember Chavella.
Here.
Councilmember Coesmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Hams.
Here.
Councilmember Pauldell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Here.
Uh, next item up this evening is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments can be limited to five minutes. Make course with governing body rules and procedure. The City Reserve is right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. Uh, I did have a sign up sheet here that was out in the hallway. Nobody signed up, and that does not preclude anyone from coming forward at this time that would like to make a public comment. Crone, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Marion Council. This evening you're gonna proclaim the, uh, this is the Spanish Heritage History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month in Marion. And, uh, it's been a little bit on the nose because there's a local Hispanic business that's been trying to open for about five months now and being held back by our city, one thing after the other. Uh, they're trying to open where Adidas used to be, Adidas Cuisine, south of our farmer's market. Residents have been asking for a long time for more restaurants in our downtown district, greater diversity of businesses. And our city itself has, has been, uh, getting in the way of businesses trying to open. They've put a lot of money into that building. Never mind it was functional for decades as a restaurant. Um, so, you know, as is, it would have been, should have been fine, but they've already invested making it much nicer on the inside. And, uh, please, uh, help remove those red locks. Thank you.
Mr. Crone, anyone else like to come forward at this time? Yes, sir, please come forward. And I failed, is that normal? Please give your name and have this for the record.
He failed, as he normally does.
Dan Lee, 5848 Marion Drive. Uh, hey, I was coming up to find out, uh, if any of you know about the Johnson Drive lights on the bridge over Turkey Creek. It, it looks like a disco. They're strobing on and off and, uh. I'd send an email, uh, but I haven't heard anything back yet, if, if anything's happened, and I sent it to Public Works Director. Um, also, it, it's been, it's been going on for like six months. I have a video, uh, six months ago, and I have a video, um, night before last. So if anybody wants to see it, or if you wanna drive by there at night when the wind's blowing a little bit, you'll, uh, you'll see what's going on with the, both the, uh. I don't know if you call them the rope lights or whatever. They sometimes go, and then, uh, the street lights and the lights under the bridge for the, uh, streamway trail. Blink off and on, it looks like a disco.
Now you bring that to our attention, and I'm sure our Director of Public Works will check into it. Anyone else like to report at this time?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will close out the public portion of the meeting. Uh, next item up this evening is consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. Everybody will serve discussion of these items unless the council member show a request, in which case that item will be, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, we do have three items this evening on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have any more of those items removed? I see no one wanting to have an item removed. I would entertain a motion. Well, yeah, Silver's going.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve consent agenda items one through three.
We're in a motion, have a second?
Mr. Mayor, you second?
Madam Clerk, we're in a motion, second.
Councilmember Chavella.
Aye.
Councilmember Coesmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hams.
Aye.
Councilmember Pauldell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like, uh, next item up is the Mayor's Report. And the first one, as you all know, I like proclamations and, had several proclamations this evening. And, and I would like to read the first proclamation. And this is, whereas Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover 30 days starting September 15th to observe Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those who, whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the achievements and contributions of Hispanic Americans and creates awareness of the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic and social growth of the United States. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures. And whereas the city of Marion is welcoming and inclusive community dedicated to improving the quality of life for those we serve. Now therefore, I, Bob Page, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month proclaimed on this eighth day of September, 2025. And I understand, and a book, we have a video?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hispanic Heritage Month to me is a spotlight. It's a chance to amplify my voice without letting it define who I am. It's, it's a month for my art to speak.
It's a gathering of, of mine, and as an artist, I like to see the energy that it brings.
It means a lot to me because it makes me feel like respected as a culture. When I can hear in this country, I feel like, oh, wow, that's so cool, like, that they celebrate this. Makes me feel welcome.
Latinx artists that inspire me are people that didn't wait to be accepted. People like Leonore Carrington and Frida Kahlo, who move with such intensity and disrupted with such unapologeticness.
Well, I have to say that I really like the old, uh, the masters, Picasso, Dali, all this. I kinda like that form of art. When you walk through the museum, you see all this old art and you go home inspired.
The Mexican art is so rich, it's so many techniques, different styles, and it makes me feel so proud of that. Like, oh my God, I learned this from the culture and all my art is influenced by the culture.
The piece that best represents me is Love, where I mix memory and emotion all into one body. It's not a painting, it's a mirror, and I can't really explain it, but I ask that it be seen with wisdom.
The best piece of art that represents me is Hermosa. And Hermosa comes from, uh, the Spanish women in my family. They're, they're very lively and they're very, they were in our family.
My one piece of art that really reflects my experience is Water Nature. This piece was inspired by plein air better fire genocide, because that fire, fire need to connect with nature. And also makes me feel connected with things with the new space.
Artists don't just challenge narratives, they create the mythology. They are the architects of perception, and they're able to pull the tangible from the astral. Honestly, I, when I do my art, I think about how it will outlive me and how it will be a mark on people of my heritage.
My colors are based upon emotion. And so, um, if you see a dark painting or monument, then it's got a lot more deeper meaning to it. The brighter ones are the more happier times.
People here know me as a mural artist, but I don't like to be categorized. I really love to be called as a multimedia artist, and I love that feeling. I use a lot of reporters' objects to do a second change to objects, and that's very important to my art. In my art, you will see like a bad technique.
I would tell young Hispanic artists to not let themselves be diluted. Let their material show and let their fire shine bright.
What I would share with the young artists is stay true to yourself, and one thing is never apologize for your artwork.
Feel proud of your work. That's the message I wanna, I wanna say to the young artists who are Hispanic. Artistically, is the way that you're gonna share your vision with the world.
Very nice video. And that art is still down at the community center for those that haven't seen it yet. Okay, uh, the next one is another proclamation, and this is for the, uh, Johnson County Christmas Bureau's 65th anniversary. Um, and I'll be presenting this to, to a couple of individuals in the audience here in a moment, but I'd like to read this first. Whereas Johnson County Christmas Bureau's mission is to provide warmth and support during the winter holiday season to low-income Johnson County families. Increase awareness and understanding of poverty in Johnson County, and give neighbors and alit to help neighbors. And whereas the Johnson County Christmas Bureau is celebrating 65 years of service, having established, been established in 1960 by the Shin Mission Chapter of the AAUW as a coordinating adopter family service. And whereas in 1977, the Holiday Shop format was introduced, and now the Johnson County Christmas Bureau Holiday Shop operates for nine days each December, during which qualified clients select from groceries, toys, children's clothing, personal pillow items, adult gifts, books and coats, and bikes. And whereas economic factors and changing demographics have increased, the demand for services continues to grow. The 2024 Holiday Shop served 13,300 Johnson County residents, including 2,900 families and 1,100 nursing home residents. And whereas clients' needs continue throughout the year, Johnson County Christmas Bureau began the Christmas in July Festival in 2024, offering books, clothing, toys, personal care items, and information about community resources available to low-income Johnson County families with children ages 10 and younger. And whereas the Johnson County Christmas Bureau, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, is supported by the financial and in-kind donations from community organizations, religious institutions, businesses, individuals, and grants. Now therefore, I, Bob Page, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Johnson County Christmas Bureau Month in recognition and celebration of their 65th anniversary. Proclaiming on this night, eighth day of September, 2025. And, and my understanding is that we have two individuals that are gonna come forward. Oh, I had your names here somewhere. Yes, uh, Deb McFeeder and also Roseanne Newcomer, vote for members. And, uh, I'm gonna present this to you, but they are actually located here in Marion, for those that may not know that. Would you like to say a few words before I come present this to you?
Yes, definitely. I'm, I'm Roseanne Newcomer. I am the president of Johnson County Christmas Bureau this year. And we're honored that you can take this time out of your busy schedules and actually appreciate like a lot of volunteers in neighborhood do for the community. So it is a neighbor's, um, helping neighbors concept, and we have been around now for 65 years. And we're celebrating our milestone, I guess, um, anniversary, uh, this month, so September 19th. So I just wanna let you know, thank you so much. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, long time volunteers that have been around and doing this longer than I have. And I'm impressed because people come back year after year to volunteer and to get involved with the community. So Deb, did you wanna say something?
So it's, uh, I think the foundation of Johnson County Christmas Bureau, for those who haven't been involved, is very interesting. We're an organization that consists of one and a half employees, and yet you've heard how many people that we serve every year. We serve them because of people like you, organizations like you. Uh, we would look for you to, uh, encourage people, citizens of Marion to apply. Last year, there were 66 families that came to our Holiday Shop. What makes us different than other organizations is, there was an article in the Star that describes us, we give with dignity. So, uh, many of us have been involved in like the Red Bag projects where you pick a tag off a tree and you were asked to buy a size seven, eight pajamas for a boy. What we let our families do is shop for those items, so those people get what they need. Often it's the only thing that some of those families may get for Christmas. So, uh, we hope to increase awareness of what we do. We also have more than 3,000 volunteers, people like Emily here. Emily, I, she sat down, I said, I know her. Of course, everybody says, you, you know everybody because of Christmas Bureau. I'm like, we either go to the gym together or we're working at Christmas Bureau. But, uh, it's a delightful organization, and we would encourage you, uh, as a city council, to come and volunteer at the Holiday Shop this year. We do a lot of groups, we do a lot of business teams, and that's another part of our mission, is enabling neighbors to help neighbors. So we appreciate your prioritization. We thank you for any, um, uh, referrals that you make to us. We open up our client applications on October the 1st. So thank you so much.
I'll wear it down. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Are you going to do it there? Okay, get my good side.
Thank you.
I'll hold it in the middle.
Appreciate you filling that need. And I have an additional proclamation. The next one is, whereas the Johnson County Health Center's Co-Responder Program was established in two thousand and eleven to embed mental health conditions with law enforcement agencies to respond together to individuals in crisis, providing the right intervention at the right time and connecting individuals to appropriate resources. And whereas Marion started partnering with Johnson County's Co-Responder Program in two thousand seventeen to address the rising demand for mental health and substance abuse calls of service. And whereas mental health and substance use challenges can lead to homelessness, prison, and emergency room visits, which are costlier for communities than early interventions, connections to behavioral health services. And whereas today, the Co-Responder Program has twenty-one co-responder physicians and fifteen partnerships with local law enforcement agencies. And whereas Marion has hired two co-responders in partnership with northeast Johnson County cities to aid with mental health-related calls and to let individuals know about programs across the metro area to help them with their needs. Now therefore, in recognition of their service to our community, I, Bob Pape, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as National Co-Responder Week, proclaiming on this eighth day of September, twenty twenty-five, by the mayor. And I'm going to present this, and we actually might have a report in just a moment, so I guess you'll be speaking here. But so at this point, I think we have team leader Jen Melby, and also another person. I'm going to go down and present this to you, let's get a picture, and then we'll let you give your report. Thank you. We're going to give it around.
She's afraid to come up here and talk to you all by herself. I am proud to introduce Jen Melby, team leader for Johnson County, and I'll give you a little short presentation on how the co-responder program has been operating in the city of Marion over the last year. I just wanted to let you all know, all the things that you guys fund for the police department, for the citizens, that the police department takes care of. Co-responder is one of the most important ones, in my opinion, and has been a game changer in law enforcement, is from my perspective, the last thirty-six years. It's one of those watershed events, and you all know, we average, maybe between seven and fourteen, we'll have calls a week that our officers have to deal with, and having the co-responders assist us in that is just a game changer. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, recognizing National Co-Responder, Co-Responder Week. So good council meeting to kind of recap what's been going on. Just for some history, for those of you who might not know, like Mayor mentioned, the program, the Northeast program, started in twenty seventeen, so the co-responder program not only started in two thousand and eleven, was our first one, twenty seventeen. Actually, seven cities came together, so Leewood and Perry Village were also included with Marion mission from Old Park Westwood Fairway, and that was one co-responder for all those cities. A lot of space to cover, and so twenty eighteen was probably our first data year that we had a full co-responder per year, and so I just think it's remarkable to talk about where we started to where we are now, because in twenty eighteen, our co-responder responded to seventeen nine-one-one calls for the northeast five cities, and she did fourteen follow-ups. In twenty twenty-four, we did four hundred and eighty-five nine-one-one responses with officers in person to assess those folks in crisis, and eight hundred and thirty-four follow-ups following the police contact. So just kind of speaks volumes to what Krista and Andy, and this is Krista, so sorry, she's not getting her start, evening co-responder, and Andy Massey is our daytime co-responder. But I just think that this kind of growth shows the demand, that the work is real, and the trust in the program is really strong. We have really good relationships with our officers at all five cities. But I think what's also really important is that what happens after that initial response, the way that we can touch the citizens and help afterward. And so we don't just leave when the crisis ends, we follow up, we make sure people are connected to outpatient care, medication, housing supports. We also started in twenty twenty-two our specialty follow-ups, which Krista has taken, she's our grant-funded co-responder, and so she's taking lead on those specialty follow-ups that we wouldn't necessarily be able to do if we didn't have the extra support from a second co-responder. And so that includes things like following up with loved ones after a completed suicide, trying to get them connected to supports after a loss like that, or even our trauma follow-ups, which has been incredible for officers to have an opportunity to, you know, maybe they're on a fatality accident scene, and it's just something terrible that they're having to help folks with, and they don't feel like they have anything to offer. But we can say, hey, we have a co-responder who's just going to call and check on you. And so we get to be the people that say, hey, officer so-and-so said that you were a part of this, and that was a really horrible thing, and so we just want to check on you and make sure that you're okay and see if you need new resources. Because it's not uncommon that we will call those folks, and they have other things going on in their lives too, right? They've just lost a loved one that we don't know about, or they have their own mental health concerns, and they're not on our radar because they're not having police contact. But they have their own stressors, and so it's just really awesome to be able to offer that as a resource from the police department and really increase that positive community relationship with officers of like, wow, that officer cared enough to have me, to have someone call and check on me. And so it's not like we're calling them and saying that they're mentally ill, it's just really like that community policing support. And so same with domestic violence follow-ups, being able to offer resources to victims of domestic violence, and then families impacted by overdoses. So we've been able to do a lot of harm reduction in that. And so in last year, in twenty twenty-four, Krista and Andy were able to provide a hundred and seventy-one of those specialty follow-ups to citizens who wouldn't be considered in a mental health crisis, so we just found other ways to help them. So I think that that, those moments are often happen quietly outside of the public eye, but we really are able to catch a lot of folks. But because your ongoing commitment, we're able to meet people at their most difficult moments with care, connection, and hope, and on behalf of Johnson County Health Center and our co-responders, we thank you for your continued support with this partnership. So. Do you have any questions for me?
If you have any questions, you can just tell me.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Great program, and we appreciate your being here and being a part of our community. Okay, the last thing I have up for the mayor's report is I always like to talk a little bit about things that I and other council members have done in the last two weeks. I'll start off by saying I attended the luncheon meeting with Therese Davids and a number of high-ranking officials from the state of Kansas and the federal government. The meeting was to discuss the impact that Kansas farmers are being impacted due to the terrorists and wars, and found out that Ukraine is the fifth largest exporter of Kansas farmers, which was kind of interesting. Several other city officials, Johnson County and state representatives were also in attendance. I'm not sure why I was invited, but anyway, gave me an opportunity though to speak with Congressman Davids about our Corps of Engineer plan, and that we might probably need more assistance from the government when we decide on that project. So she said that she would stay in touch with us, so that was good. Got to be a part of the Malagros painting project at the community center, and I know some others did too. Keep an eye out though when you go down there to see the blue blocks, those, I personally painted a few of them, I didn't paint all of them, but the blue ones were mine. And then it was interesting that they got our whole community involved in that project, so you got to be a part of the art project itself. I thought that was a nice touch. So, and we are, several community art members were also down there, I know, and he was willing. I had a council member, Ms. Jingle, prepare tonight's agenda. I attended the Alay that holds settlers, and I don't know, that hasn't been noticed to me, I don't know if you guys knew this, but they've been doing that for a hundred and twenty-seven years. I mean, I was blown away by that. But they invited all the mayors in Johnson County to come down there, and also commissioners and representatives and, you know, legislators, and so anyway, we got, we got to attend that, and that's a real great, great event. If you haven't seen that, I encourage you to go next year, it's over now. Okay, I and a council member attended the Malagro Art presentation that they had at the community center. They had a slide presentation that gave our community, gave our community the, an idea of other projects that they've done in the past in other cities around the United States, which I know was real interesting. And I like that they're easily accessible and want to interact with our community. There are projects currently going on down at our community center, and if you haven't seen it, please go down and check it out, and it's got some vibrant colors, and they're making great progress. So you know, get down and see it. I had a council member attended the opening day of the Mexican Heritage Artist Program at the Timboree Art Gallery. Good food, great art, great art lovers were there, I got a chance to meet some of those artists, we saw depicted this evening, they were down there showing their art, so that was good as well. And lots been going on, I have two big to chat. I had several council members were able to attend the Chiefs Red Friday Picture Taking of Staff, a sea of red shirts depicting our support of the Chiefs ensued. Check out Facebook if you haven't seen that, unfortunately, we didn't get the win, but next, this week would be, it'd be better. I met with OPFD retirees for breakfast, gave them updates on what's happening in Marion, attended our monthly Johnson County Quanis meeting, gave them the updates on what's happening in Marion. A couple council members attended the AdaWise Board Meeting and made sure that they're aware of the single owner event, that our holiday that we're going to have starting November of next year, and give them the update, make sure that they want to be part of that contract, that they're welcome. A council member attended one of our home residents' art shows, which, and those of you that don't know, we, one of the crew people is in our community, Christopher Leach, who is, was provided his art show at somewhere Missouri Avenue, Pinball, at Pinball, excuse me, so that occurred, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Leach for his artistic talents as well. That's all I have from my report. Is there anything that I missed from the council that you'd like to throw out? Thank you for enduring that with me. Looks like the next item up will be council items, and I think we have a driveway grant program presentation, which we had written down.
Hey, Mayor, council members, by the way, you know about my directors. So you've got a presentation on your twenty twenty-six driveway grant program. The driveway grant program is approved along with a number of the, all the other grants that we implement as part of your budget process that you all just completed. First, just a little rundown about our current driveway grant program. Since twenty twenty-two, we've done twenty-nine driveways. The program targets gravel driveways and driveways that are heavily deteriorated. We do have an income guidelines on there, it's eighty percent of area median income for Johnson County. And the city plays for full cost replacement of the driveway. We also, the city directly contracts with the driveway installers. So for twenty twenty-six, for another thing, we're starting to, the past few years, getting fewer applications, or I should say, fewer qualifying applications, because we're getting fewer folks that are income-qualified, homeowners, and have a deteriorated driveway. So every year, we send out letters to everybody that has a gravel deteriorated driveway. So we also started informally asking those folks who didn't participate in the program exactly why they weren't participating, and one of the main things they said was that they weren't income, did you think we got them? So for twenty twenty-six, we're proposing to reduce the number of areas for folks to participate in the program. We are proposing to focus solely on gravel driveways. I know that something the council has expressed, we like to work more towards helping folks with the gravel driveways. Gravel driveways sometimes can be, have an effect on value of neighborhoods, also can have a pretty big effect, a potential big effect on infrastructure, as I gravel gets out into the street, obviously, wears in the street, and then even more as it gets in the storm sewer, can cause wear, problems in the storm sewer. So there are benefits to the infrastructure system of removing gravel driveways. So within City Marion, Co-Responder did a visual survey of the whole city. We identified approximately a hundred and thirty residential gravel driveways, and those, about forty of them are rental properties. So for twenty twenty-six, we're proposing to allow any owner and occupant of a single or two-family home with a gravel driveway to participate in the program. I'm going to get a little more detail on that here in just a second. So for twenty twenty-six, we're going to do tier one and tier two participants. Tier one's going to recognize that the gravel, excuse me, the driveway program was originally set up to help assist folks that are income-qualified with their driveway. So we're going to set tier one participants at a hundred percent of area median income. I've got another slide here, just a second, it explains a little bit more. It's going to be very much for tier one, we're going to operate in the same fashion we currently do now. The city will pay for a full cost of the gravel driveway replacement, and it will be very similar to the current program. The big difference is going to be for tier two participants. These are going to be for households that are, are just, excuse me, are above a hundred percent of area median income. The city will pay for the first ten thousand dollars for the cost of replacing that driveway. Where we come up at ten thousand dollars, when we look back at the driveways we've already done, and the average driveway cost is about eleven thousand dollars. So ten thousand dollars will get, based on our experience, will do an average driveway in the city of Marion. So the program will pay for the first ten thousand dollars for the cost of that driveway, and then the property owner responsible for the remaining balance of the driveway replacement. So here's a chart or a show, table showing the differences in the income guidelines. In the far left is the household size, so this comes from Department of Housing and Urban Development, do the number of income guidelines. So the left-hand side, household size, the second column is twenty twenty-three, eighty percent of area median income, so that goes for twenty twenty-five's program year, so the year we just completed, and then the far right column is twenty twenty-four, so will be the guidelines for the twenty twenty-six program. So household five, with the new guidelines, a hundred and three thousand dollars or less, they could potentially get a full replacement of their gravel driveway. Again, we're going to concentrate and solely do gravel driveways this year. So how will we implement this program? First of all, we'll do direct mailing to all the property owners of gravel drive, with homes and gravel driveways, we already do that, so we'll continue to do that. We accept the applications between October and November, there's kind of a general timeline, we'll continue to work to get those coming in and out, and exactly what those dates will be. Staff will review the applications as we currently do now. Tier one applicants, the folks that are income-eligible, they'll still receive priorities, they'll still go to the top of the list. Staff then goes out and measures up, designs driveways, and see what we do exactly right now. And then we work with the participants on the design of the driveway, and we also emphasize to them that if they participate in the program, all the gravel will need to be removed. Again, that's exactly what we do right now. Probably the big difference will be that for the tier one participants, those that are above a hundred percent of area median income, will provide to them at that point in time estimated cost of replacing the driveway. We already do estimate costs as part of the whole program, but we'll provide that to the tier two participants, so they'll have an idea of what the difference will be and how much they're responsible. For example, if someone has a driveway that is estimated to be thirteen thousand dollars to replace, the program will provide the first ten thousand dollars for that, and they will be responsible for the remaining three thousand dollars. Just to continue with the implementation, once we go out and have discussions, all the participants gather all the information, we then put all the driveways out to bids or package, again, that's what we currently do right now. We review and approve the bid, actually, you all, as council, approve the bids, again, same processes we do currently. Again, the difference here, we intend for tier two folks, at that point in time, will provide them with a proper amount for how much they will owe for the replacement of the driveway. Again, we get a bid in that says it's a fourteen thousand dollar driveway, the program will cover the first ten thousand, and the partner will give the remaining four thousand. We will then give the folks a couple of weeks to provide us with the money, we will not start the driveway until we have the money from the property owner. Again, if they're not participating in the program, they'll want to, at that point in time, we'll go down to the next person on the tier two list, we'll be trying very hard to make sure we expend all those funds, and following that, we will have the driveway installed, the contractor installed. With that, happy to answer any questions you have, Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Anne, go ahead, please.
So you had conversation with people, and you feel really confident that this is addressing the issues? Are there very many people who just are not interested in replacing the gravel driveway at all?
So yes, there were folks in our conversation that said the same thing, that they just weren't interested in replacing the gravel driveway, which again, that's certainly their choice, you know, it'll be interesting to see when they see how much the city's willing to assist with that, if they're going to have the same mentality, but yeah, I would say that the conversations that responsibly got the two names, responsibly who won, over income, and two were.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Kuzma.
Yeah, how are the tier two applicants going to be sorted if there's not enough money to service everybody?
We will essentially, first come, first served, if you have two folks.
Ms. Van, come on.
Sorry. Can you remind me what we allocated in the budget for this program in twenty twenty-six?
Yes. Yes, it was a hundred thousand.
Thank you. What about for tier two residents who do not necessarily have gravel driveway, but their driveway needs to be upgraded?
Uh, we were um, focusing again on gravel driveways at this point in time. On a, on a, we really see, obviously, um, we have much more gravel need for gravel driveways. Um, we're gonna have a few deteriorated driveways. So the gravel lines, we're just focusing on those at this point in time. I will see what kind of response we get, um, if we need to expand on the number of driveways. We can certainly do that till the end of it, the program comes back for it in twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions about uh, rentals. Um, so are there any short-term rentals with gravel driveways that you know of?
Uh, do, we did not parse it down that long.
Okay. And then is there any way for uh, like long-term renters to make use of this program? Or would that have to go through the homeowner or or is there, you know, no, no way at all?
So at this point in time, there is no, again, uh, next year, I'm certain you can tweak the, as I probably felt and said, this is your all program. You all can tweak things as much as you want. Um, so for next year, if there's a desire um, to get uh, one of the properties in there, just let me fold those in those books. Yes, again, your all's program. Ms. Sands.
Sorry, one last question. Um, could tier two participants, if they're selected, how would they pay the city, like credit card, check, like, or any form?
Pretty much any form. I'm still sorting through just the mechanics of that, but obviously to check what we're, we're still sorting through the mechanics. We think there will probably be any form of payment, but again, uh, let us sort through the mechanics a little more. We say definitively, that's how we'll be looking at it. One? Any other questions? Is it, Ms. Sands? Okay, it looks like next item up is approval of an agreement from Olson Inc. I'm gonna direct company to approve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the Marion Drive fifty-fifth to fiftieth terrace project included in our five-year CIP with construction in twenty twenty-seven. The scope of work is um, based on results of a planning sustainable places um, grant that uh, we worked with Ogleland Park on to do the entire Marion Drive from our city limits to their city limits. Um, the project includes a two-inch mill and overlay, um, reducing the pavement to a three-lane section, the entire width of the project. Replacement of curb and gutter sidewalks and ADA ramps, um, streetscape improvements such as trees and benches, stormwater improvements and a stormwater BNP for water quality. Street light replacement, traffic signal one improvements at fifty-fifth street, a ten-foot shared use path on the west side of Marion Drive and pavement margins. Um, we originally did not include um, fifty-fifth, fifty-terrace to um, Antioch just because we were planning to do this roundabout project, but we don't know for sure if that's gonna happen. So we thought we'd go ahead and recommend, you know, a million and overlaying all the way to Antioch. So that would be added to the scope of work. Um, we sent out a request for qualifications in June of this year for on-call engineering services. We received qualifications from sixteen firms, which was a lot. Um, we, uh, the public works selection team recommended BHC and Olson to provide our on-call services based on qualifications. So for this project, we're recommending Olson provide this type of work. They have a lot of experience working with federal funding projects. So this project does receive grant funds from the federal government. So there's a lot of, along with those great funds, there's some obligations and requirements that we have to follow. They have a lot of experience in that. Um, their cost is five hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents with design beginning right away and construction in twenty twenty-seven. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Another question, uh, I know the overall amount of it is six point one million. Is that, will we be able to go all the way to Antioch within that much limit or will we have to readdress that?
We should be able to. Yes.
Any other questions, Director? Go ahead, Ms. Sands.
Um, I saw something here about like sixty percent design. Will we get like designer dates throughout the design?
Yes. And I did wanna add too, that when we added in that section, the um, on-street parking between fiftieth terrace by the church, we're gonna go ahead and remove that because that was originally there for the businesses. So we're gonna go ahead and remove that with this project.
Other questions, Director Company? Oh, I remember a question.
I'm assuming we'll have public meetings as part of the design review and stuff too.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Crone, I, I think we have a question for the public, please, please come forward, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the record?
Billy Crone, six sixty-three West Street. I heard that magic term road diet comes up from time to time. All the neighbors I know like to drive, they've got their cars, they wanna keep their roads. I've been walking and biking a lot lately, but I still also wanna keep our roads. So please, no road diets here, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lee, please come forward, any others for the record?
Yeah, I wanna agree with what Billy just said. Uh, nobody wants a road diet down there. Uh, the overlay and everything else seems like that'd be pretty good. But uh, I think that um, no, nobody wants it to go down to to three lanes. It's four lanes now right there and it's good. And I wanna know if, it's it's in Ward Two, so as the Ward Two council members talk to every business from Sonic north to Antioch, just see their input on it. Because I think that, I think that everybody needs to be talked to, to get their opinion. But it's, I mean, it is their businesses that the road goes in front of.
Sure. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Director Company, do you, did that catch you off? Do you have any, some more you'd have?
I was just going to make a comment on the, the recommendation for the three-lane section was based on the PSP. And what they do is they take a look at the traffic load. There's only a short, a short section in that area that's four lanes. So we're trying to make it consistent through the whole road area. So that was, that was why we're recommending a three-lane section.
And that's working in conjunction with with the plans all the way to Southwest Boulevard, I understand, with the other additional cities.
Although Ogleland Park could change.
Mayor may have. Any other questions, Director Company? Okay, um, yes, I would entertain motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Sands.
Um, I move that we approve an agreement with Olson Incorporated for design services for the Marion Drive fifty-fifth street to fiftieth terrace um, improvements project in the amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay. Ms. Crisman, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a second.
Okay, man, we have a motion, say it.
Councilmember Fosmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hand?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Motion passive eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like the next item up is September CIP updates and I bet that's why you're still staying there.
That's right. Um, the September CIP updates in your packet, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, I was gonna give you a quick update on our underground utilities project. So we're really down to Verizon, um, installing their conduit on the east side of Antioch, South LaShawnee Mission Parkway. Following that, they have about two to three weeks to splice in their existing, their new service to the existing businesses and some of that is night work. And then we'll be working on um, having the poles taken down and then site restoration. So we're getting really close. So I will continue to keep you updated on that project. The other project is our twenty twenty-five street drainage project that I wanted to talk about. Um, as you know, we've been working closely with councilmember Chaveta and the school to um, get this construction completed while kids, making sure that kids safely walk or are transported to school. Um, right now, they're really focusing on sixty-first street just to get that done because that's the main traffic way to and from the school. So they've gotten the storm sewer done on that street. They completed the curb on the north side. They're grading for sidewalk now, so they should, barring any, any bad weather this week, they should get that done on the north side. Then they'll jump to the south side and they're gonna go ahead and move up the pavement to um, follow that work and then they'll go into the other streets. So once that's done, I think, you know, that'll make it easier for our school traffic to get to and from. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Ms. Silver's.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Director. Um, earlier this year, uh, I brought up in one of our meetings that at the corner of Forty-Ninth Street and Antioch, there, when they were doing utility work, uh, there seemed to be a watering issue um, in Antioch, uh, right in the first line of Antioch. Um, I know we've been chasing water main breaks all summer. Um, it's reappeared.
Okay.
Uh, the pavement's been pretty wet and so I thought that might be something we wanna look into before it gets cold and uh, that causes an hazard.
On Antioch?
It's on Antioch, not at Forty-Ninth.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. They may be working on it, but I'll, I'll find out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, Director Company? Okay, I see no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it looks like we have a single hall or update.
We sure do. Um, the last time we had this discussion, uh, we were uh, dealing with residents who couldn't receive traffic service, particularly in residence that had moved into Marion. They couldn't establish a contract with any of the established haulers. Each one of you should have received a mailer in your inboxes. Over the last week or so, uh, GFL has officially opened up a residential service for Marion residents. Uh, this is a completely opt-in service. It is not the city's contract. It will be individual contracts with homeowners or occupants um, until November first of twenty twenty-six. Um, again, it's completely optional. Uh, we've added all of the FAQs onto our webpage, so please direct people to those. We've gotten a few questions uh, since this mailer's come out. Uh, I have been meeting with the HOAs on if they are going to opt in to the uh, city's contract. Um, I've heard from two, or really one for sure, of the four that have consolidated contracts. I meet with another one tomorrow and I'm still waiting to hear from the other two. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any other question, I guess, this question's been asked of me and I have no answer, so hopefully you do. Uh, those individuals that may be reaching out to GFL to take on their service has obviously a lot of their existing service. Who will be responsible and whether it be a cost involved to get rid of the old ends uh, from their existing service before they switch? Is that something, do we know there's a cost? Uh, will those people be impacted by that? And some of them have no way to get that back themselves, so it's a killer of it.
Most likely if they have an existing contract that they're terminating, I would imagine there's gonna be a cancellation fee. Uh, once the city's contract starts in November of next year, uh, that fee won't exist anymore. However, until November first of next year, if someone is canceling a contract and there's a clause within their contract for a cancellation fee, they'll most likely have to pay that fee.
There's never sign, isn't there?
All right, I know the answer now. Thank you. Mr. Silver's.
Well, I just wanna clarify on the record that if anyone does sign up with GFL at this time, they will not be receiving the negotiated rate that the city is working with GFL on. That should hopefully start in a year, correct?
Correct, yes. The negotiated contract with GFL between the city will begin on Nov- November first, twenty twenty-six.
Go ahead.
Is there a timeline for opt-in for the HOAs?
I have not given them a deadline.
Do they have like a deadline or they, two years from now come back and join that contract?
At this point, GFL hasn't given me a deadline to give them a deadline, but I'm sure at some point they'll want to know, uh, just because of the quantity.
How many households again do we have, um, order magnitude?
I'll let you know. I need to look, I'm so sorry.
Uh, and last, I, I, somebody asked about, if they plan to pay their, their tax bill once a year instead of biannually? Uh, is it, I imagine it's the same, do they just make the lump sum for the entire year's contract?
That's correct, yes. So the um, the way the county assesses uh, properties, it, they, they get two bills a year. They don't actually have to pay the full amount until the end of the year. Most people, your mortgage is going to choose to pay it twice a year. Uh, but if someone chooses to just pay it once a year, they'll just pay the full lump sum at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Ms. Crisman?
Um, no, I'm just, would like to say that I was pretty excited to see that mailer and it's gonna say, I don't remember the exact number that's on there, but I do remember that it's a bit lower than what I'm currently paying per quarter. Um, so I guess I do need to look at my cancellation fee, but I'll probably be switching for November twenty twenty-six.
Ms. Sands?
Um, just because I'm, are you going to AdaWise tomorrow night?
Sure am.
See you there. That's interesting. Okay, I'll talk to you later.
Ms. Sands?
Have we confirmed though, is November first the date of the contract or are we still debating whether it's first to the year?
It is, it's uh, November first, which uh, just conveniently is also a Monday.
Any other questions? All right, no other questions? Yeah, Mr. Crone, come on forward, please. Say a word.
Yes, it was asked how many households from uh, from markets I've read recently? About fifty-one, thirty-two in Marion, just to say, and I'll take, thank you.
All right. Uh, well, it looks like uh, the last thing we have is information letters. We have the park for minutes, we're in our packets. And unless somebody has any questions, Director Slough on that. I should be here though. I didn't ask you to know exactly the session this evening. Mr. Eagle, do you have anything for staff?
Uh, just as a follow-up item from our last meeting, this Sunday, we are going to do, September fourteenth from eight to noon, we're gonna do the marble takeaway. Uh, we'll push that out on social media unless it's already out there. Uh, that will be where we will uh, have a public works employee down at Baker Marble at um, fifty-seven eighteen Marion Drive to basically just ride her with the process. We're not gonna have our employees haul anything or put anything in anybody's truck. But if with proof of residency or proof of that you're a Missouri business, I'm sorry, of Marion business, uh, you can haul as much marble away as you want, that's, it'll be in front. We're not going to put out any of the very large slabs out, uh, just for safety precautions. But uh, that will be Sunday, the fourteenth, eight to noon.
Have you been answering questions about that or anything else? Any questions, Mr. Eagle, about that or anything else? I do have one other thing I wanna mention though, it's September thirteenth, one of my favorite events for the city, and that's the Turkey Creek Car and Motorcycle Show. So uh, that'd be down there at the farmer's market and please, please attend that as well. It's a well, well-attended event and I'll probably have a card myself. Did you have a Ms. Sands?
No, I was just gonna say car show.
Car show, what do you remember in car show too? Anybody else have anything to say? Well, having no other business before this evening, I would have a motion. Sands?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
We have a second. Go ahead, a second.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Good, we have a second. And motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.
Jan, have a beautiful evening.
Did I introduce myself to you guys?
Chris Bruce, how fun.
All right, see you around Marion, everyone.